January the third. He is with me for the pledge of allegiance and after the pledge, please remain standing will be led in prayer this evening by Reverend P.R. Keat from Grace Assembly of God.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with hearts full of gratitude. Thank you for the opportunity to gather in service of our community. Thank you for each leader here for their willingness to step up and make decisions that impact the lives of so many. Thank you for every person present for their care and investment in the well-being of our city. Lord, we recognize that leadership is not easy and the decisions before this council are often complex, but we ask for your wisdom to guide them. Grant them clarity of mind, discernment in their choices, and the courage to do what is best for our community. May their discussions be marked by thoughtfulness, compassion, and a genuine desire to see our city flourish. God, we also pray for unity, even when perspectives differ. May there be respect, understanding, and a shared commitment to the greater good. Above all, Lord, we thank you for the privilege of serving and for the opportunity to make a difference. May this meeting be productive, may hearts be open, and may your wisdom and grace be present in all that is said and done. We ask all this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. May we sit down? Roll call. Here.
Here.
Bill.
Here.
Arthur.
Here.
Lexi.
Here.
Manship.
Here.
Noel.
Here.
And Williams.
Here. And we have a floor. All of you should receive copies of our minutes for our last regular meeting of January the 22nd. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Manship. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing ended. Roll call on the minutes.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Noel.
Abstain.
And Williams.
Aye. Finish your approval with a vote of seven to zero with one abstention. Reports, Corporation Council.
I have nothing to report.
Anybody in the control at this time?
I don't think so.
Any other committee or board reports? This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council concerning items that are on tonight's agenda. If you would like to do so, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
3489 South Honey Creek Road, adjacent to the project. Thank you for your thanks.
I'm sorry, before you continue, I need to remind everyone, there is a five-minute time limit per person and a twenty-minute time limit for topic. I'm sorry.
I'm not sure if his microphone is on. Sorry to hear that.
Is the microphone on at this podium? If you're online, please mute your microphone, please.
This is why I've always done nothing but use camera the last ten years because...
All right, go ahead. If you're online, please mute your microphone.
There is that possibility, but still gotta make the person feel... They do it up around me. It's them all.
There we go. All right, I'm sorry for the interruption. You have been a reminder, you have five minutes and twenty minutes per topic. Go right ahead. Five minutes per individual.
Thank you for letting me speak here, gentlemen. Like I said, I live adjacent to the project being projected. 3489 South Honey Creek Road, about fifteen acres. My biggest concern is, is, you know, pretty much the... The structure of the houses, you know, it's being built. The quality of the houses that's going to be built in that area. It must be traffic and road conditions are already horrendous. We do have additions being built on the west side of Honey Creek Road right now, the Nahr. So that's a couple of my issues. And I know that Greenwood have always, you know, Honey Creek Road has been pretty much a kind of a country style. You maintain landscaping and all that part of the, that area, you know, things like agriculture. I feel like we're gonna kind of slip away from that, but despite the housing condition. I know wildlife will be definitely affected in this area. By the, just the whole surrounding, you know. The area that we live in is pretty much kind of, I feel like it's more of an upper scale, upscale type, you know, area. But with the Arbor Homes being built in there, I feel that they're the starter homes. This, that's the value of our property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cool. Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time?
My name is Michael Beanheisen. I live at 2925 South Honey Creek Road. It is north of, well, I'd like to speak on reference to ordinance number 20-01. The annexation of 100, let's say, 320 acres. Property. I live north of the property. I have two properties there, one at 2925, another at 2967. And I recognize that this is an important decision. Greenwood has spent a lot of time looking at the comprehensive plan. They established a comprehensive plan for this area that ultimately resulted in this majority of this area south of the current city limits as residential. I think it's worth noting that in the comprehensive plan, it notes that those areas are intended to be mixed housing. I believe that the proposal that is being put forth by Arbor Homes is quite segregated in its design. And so it may not be compatible with the intent of what Greenwood's wanting to develop, what they would be proud to say if they had in their city limits. I would agree. This proposal to annex this 100 acres, this is its third presentation in front of this council. The recollection of the last two were similar comments, similar decisions made by residents in the area. It's clearly a large lot or a state home type area. And it's clear that in the last two presentations of the decisions brought forward, that they chose to preserve this area as one of those prized areas for Greenwood. I would support that and agree with that. I recognize we're going to get residential, this has been a strong agricultural area. I've lived there for 31 years. It was agriculture when I moved there. I have horses on my property and planning to hopefully be able to maintain that. We have hay fields and agricultural crops and would hope to be able to continue to do that. Even if Greenwood grows and expands their reach into this portion of Johnson County. I noted in the proposal that it's a request in this ordinance to annex the property of 100 acres with a joint designation of rural feed. As I stated earlier, this area is predominantly rural large lot, residential large lot and agricultural. I would ask that you give serious consideration to maintaining that type of zoning designation if you choose to annex this at this time. I think that the plan that's been proposed is not consistent with Greenwood's goals. It's not consistent with the area and so Greenwood's hesitation, as they have expressed in the past, for the right plan to go into this area. It's noted that the Arbor proposal is their standard residential provisions. That Silverthorns being built south of there, and I believe at the last council meeting, there was a question about the quality of homes or the type of homes to be built. I did not see in the responses to tell you the answer to that question. Why this area, which is Greenwood's goal, to put large lot homes, potentially higher quality homes in this area. So I would ask you to give serious consideration to this proposal. And it's my request that this is not the right plan at this time. Wait for the right plan and make it a important decision that's going to benefit Greenwood as it continues to grow. It's clear that we're running out of space and we need to make the right decisions.
You have about fifteen seconds.
Yes, the other thing I note here is that ordinance is an annexation ordinance. I don't see any details from the council as to what is to be put in that place. But I would ask that significant commitments be given in that...
I'm sorry, but your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time?
My name's Alan Mathena. Address is 6072 North 125 West Whiteland. I will repeat and agree with everything that's been said here, but just kind of reassure that I believe this has been brought up two times before and been defeated both times based on the density proposed and the quality proposed, and I would just encourage you to kind of consider that and try to think about having a lower GIB subdivision with a higher quality of housing. My, my main concern though right now is we farm a field that's just going to be directly south to the proposed subdivision. We have a field tile that runs across the neck of the subdivision. One of my concerns is if, if and when the subdivision or a subdivision goes through, I believe the tiles are to be tied in with the sewers of the subdivision. Is that correct? Reason I ask is because we've got a field on the east side of that road that has had subdivisions built around it, and it just, it holds water now that the tiles don't work anymore. So my concern is what kind of recourse do I have or do we have, once the subdivision is put in, about repairing the tile or making sure the tile tests get hooked up to the drainage when they do the subdivision? So if, if something were to go through, I just would like to be in contact with somebody so I could check to make sure that the tiles can get hooked up. So I don't know if that's what you guys are with the builder, so.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else at this time wishing to address the council on this issue or any other issue that is on tonight's agenda? All right, moving on. Ordinances and resolutions. There are none under notice and intent to consider. First reading, Resolution 25-01.
A resolution of the Greenwood Common Council to adopt the written fiscal plan for the annexation of approximately 16700 acres located at 3481 South Honey Creek Road and 6400 block west side, North 125 West, sponsored by Gibson.
Do you have a motion? Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Sorry.
Second by Mr. Lexi. Mr. Nelson.
I, we did already have some discussion about the fiscal report. I just want to make a distinction that voting approval of the fiscal report does not mean you are approving the annexation or the zone map change. It is just basically that you are in general agreeance with the impact that this would have on the city if it were to come here. It is not a approval of the site or whether or not you agree with or like the annexation and zone map change.
All right, any questions for Mr. Nelson about that? Or any questions about that issue? All right, any discussion on the council regarding Resolution 2501? Hearing ended. Roll call. Resolution 2501, first reading.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Lexi.
Arthur.
Manship.
Aye.
Noel.
Aye.
Edwood.
Aye.
Resolution 2501 passes first reading eight zero. Resolution 2502.
A resolution approving an interlocal agreement between the city of Greenwood and Pleasant Township regarding fire protection.
Do you have a motion?
Sorry.
Motion by Mr. Lexi, second. Second, second by Mr. Williams. Chief.
Welcome.
You, Council General, Fire Chief. This is a longstanding disagreement that we had in Pleasant Township to provide fire protection. I'd like to keep, continue with that relationship. All right, any questions for Chief Marshall? All right, thank you. Any discussion on the council? Hearing ended. Roll call. Resolution 2501, first reading, or 2502, first reading.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Lexi.
Arthur.
Manship.
Aye.
Noel.
Aye.
Aye.
And Campbell.
Aye. Resolution 2502 passes first reading eight zero. Resolution 2503.
A resolution of the Greenwood Common Council authorizing for filing an application for the acceptance and implementation of 2025 County Local Drive Three Communities Fund Grant in the amount of $9,474, sponsored by Gibson.
Do you have a motion?
Certainly.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Manship. Aye.
Yes, of course.
Any discussion on the council? If anyone want to talk to us about this? Senior straight forward, I guess. Any discussion on the council? Hearing ended. Roll call. Resolution 2503, first reading.
Bill.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Lexi.
Arthur.
Manship.
Aye.
Noel.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2503 passes first reading eight zero. Ordinance 2501.
An ordinance annexing certain territory contiguous to the city of Greenwood, placing it within the corporate boundaries and making it a part of the city and redefining the corporate boundaries of the city to include approximately 106, 7 acres located between County Road 125 West and County Road 200 West, sponsored by Gibson.
Do you have a motion?
Certainly.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second. Second by Mr. Lexi. This is scheduled for a public hearing. I'd like to open this up for a public hearing. If you'd like to speak for or against ordinance 2501, please step to the podium, and when your time comes, state your name and address for the record. And to the gentleman who's ran out of time with your public comments, you are welcome to come back and finish if you would like at this time. Dryer.
A short presentation. My name is Tom McDryer with Arbor Homes. Our business address is 9225 H. Park Court, Indianapolis, Indiana 46216. Thank you for having us here this evening and having us on the agenda. I always wanted to break paper down this. I think I saved it on the desktop. Yeah, something we want to... They just had the day. Yeah, that's it. It's not a big deal here. Thank you. Here's a image of a map of the site where generally is located along the southern border of Greenwood, between Honey Creek Road and North 125 West. As you see, we're just north of 600th Ward there. The total site that we're talking is 106, 7 acres. We are seeking an annexation and it's a Greenwood and a Green Zone from the current county zone, which is a mixture of agriculture and single-family dwelling to the Greenwood's Orange District. Our concept plan, as you can see here, shows a mix of detached, single-family residential homes. We are planning for two different home types in this development. To the east would be our Arbor Series. That is our traditional, traditional, in blood, Arbor's. We, that's 167 home sites made plain here in this, in this concept plan. Those are one and two story, traditional, single-family homes. To the east would be our Destination Series, about eighty-five of those home sites. Those are all ranch-style, low-maintenance options. Our total density of the site is two and a half units an acre. Wanted to just call them, call to attention some of these areas. It doesn't always show up great on these concept plans, but a lot of the areas where I'm highlighting here, there's some sort of existing tree lines that we'd be looking to preserve, whatever's on our property. That is, you know, in good, good condition, not basic species. I, I know that was listed in the staff report. That's something we certainly be looking to, to agree to. Additional amenities that will be in the neighborhood. We will be adding perimeter trails along Honey Creek Road and North 125 West. There will be an internal trail system that goes through the neighborhood. Again, it's kind of hard to see them on here, but, but it does certain that it allows those ponds and those wooded areas, connects to playground, amenity, activated areas. So it'll be a very pedestrian-focused, walkable neighborhood. I wanted to give some context around, so Arbor Homes is, is the traditional, single-family home. They've been building this for thirty, thirty years at this point here in the Indiana markets. It's, we have twelve unique floor plans, multiple exterior styles that multiple architectural styles really adds a nice addition to our neighborhoods. And each of those floor plans have levels of brick options as well. Twelve hundred square feet to thirty-two hundred square feet. We do allow for basements when, when, when the ground conditions are, allow that. So if the site, depending on where you are, geotech, if it allows for basements, that would be an option for our buyers. Those little, almost noose that comes in our, in our developments. Our buyers come at the door, they get to choose the lot, they choose the, the home they want on that lot. As long as it falls within anti-moni standards, you know, they choose cars, elevations. They get to options for sunrooms or bump outs or flex stations, third car garages. So, so really, we want them to have as much personalization home, you know, right in their home. Destination will be other product line in this neighborhood. As I mentioned, it's a ranch floor plan. Range from fifteen hundred to three to two hundred square feet, just like Arbor. They go through our design center, they get the option to, to choose which, which home fits them the best, fit their lifestyle the best. They, this is a low-maintenance portion of the community. It's meaning that snow will be removed, dump drives and sidewalks, yards will be maintained. Lot, lot text on this, this slide. These are the staff, the commitments that were listed in the staff report. I throw them up here because we are completely fine with agreeing to all of these. We were pleased to receive a positive staff recognition. Missions, commitments are those trail systems, the perimeter trails. We'll certainly be building those to comply with the UGIO. Another point in here is a traffic impact study will need to be completed. We have to kick that off. So, so we certainly will commit to that because we are already doing it. And whatever the results are with that, with that, we'll be working with city engineering to, to make those improvements. We will, other, concerning a roundabout donation to, you know, that's an important part of the, the third that are planned down here. And to him, we certainly work with planning and engineering to determine appropriate donation based on our community's impact and helping with those, those roundabouts. I know the council has a lot of statutory criteria you need to look at when you're considering rezones and annexations. We certainly need the continuity of element. We've got our border with Greenwood on the north and west quarters of our site. Currently, the site is owned residential or a large portion of it is. Yeah, there are portions agricultural in county seventy, but, but so, so this site was, you know, seen as a future residential. But also your, your comp plan adopted last year also identifies as a future residential. We'll be extending utilities and upgrading infrastructure in this area. And we will be developing high-quality housing options, incorporating amenities, extending trail systems in this area of Greenwood. We think this will be a very favorable way to use with surrounding land, whether it's current form or future form. Along with a positive staff report, we did receive a positive recommendation from the plant commission. We received the nanos so to support this project or to equally recommend it with the commitments. I want to try to address some of the concerns that were raised today, earlier in the meeting, as well as in the PC plant commission. Apologies, there was a issue with the naming, a proposed naming. So we did make a commitment to, to change that naming. We certainly want to make a new name for this. It was inadvertent. We certainly don't want to lose our resources. So that was a, a great for us to commit to that. And I know concerns and preferences have been, have been brought up. We believe our zone is consistent with the goal and vision of the comp plan and the interlace map. Larger lot development in this area is, is very critical. There's currently RL zones or RL committed lots in Scottsdale Estates, as well as our zone a significant proportion of fine street states to the west. There's a Scottsdale Estates East, which is currently going through responding procedure. It's RL zones. We think that that, that, that housing type is, has a long runway here in this, this area. In fact, the current comp plan, it's very evident that it... In fact, the current comp plan, it's very evident that it's a, a little bit more dense area, RM zone, which we aren't talking high in streets or hackneyed to make here. It is what is, what's needed in this area, as well as what the comp plan calls for. To piggyback off that a little, you know, our, our lots are the minimum RM zone lots, 55 foot wide. Our Arbor line would be 61 foot wide, would be the minimum size, 71 foot. You would have some 71 foot wide sites in there as well. And that's what we've accounted for in our concept plans, if I can count. Plus that, our destination, those would be a minimum size of 69 foot. So we are, yeah, I think the RM zoning classification. No drainage was mentioned tonight. The first eight wall we have to, you know, create a highly engineered drainage plan. And that will be done at the, the plating stages. All stormwater that's currently on the side or naturally flows on the side will, will need to be accounted for and, and selected in our planning potential bonds and released at a current rate. So certainly for this site, we believe that the drainage will improve. Benefit of that for surrounding property owners is if we sometimes see that there's drainage improves. And certainly we should not worsen. We think that would be something that would need to address. Traffic is always a concern with development. I know as we mentioned tonight, we will be doing that traffic impact study and making broad improvements for the direction of that study, including the connection for, for roundabouts in the area. Certainly want to see that, the surrounding roads and water here. I think with that, you know, we strongly agree that this development will be a positive asset to, to Greenwood. I want to thank you guys for your time, consideration. If you have any questions, I'd like to address those.
Thank you. Any questions at this time? All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against ordinance 2501?
My name is Mike O'Bea Heisen. This is 29.5 South 130. I appreciate you all for sharing a few more comments before I qualified, said I got out of work and realized that public hearing was the appropriate time to share my previous comments. To summarize some of the items that I pointed out. Obviously, roads, infrastructure, sewer, all those are important items. And I know that we have a process to accommodate those. I work with drainage plants myself, and I know that there is an approach to drainage plants. And I hope that with the amount of improvement service and plant, that we can improve the drainage in that area. But it's all a matter of where that water goes. And so I do share concerns of the other neighbors who are plumbing those areas and minecrom areas as well. What I wanted to emphasize is that, one, it's unclear to me which side of the property these different home styles that are going to be proposed. I find it standing that larger homes are on the east side. The smaller ranch homes are on the west side. And maybe that's consistent with what our development that was recently approved. But I think we still need to keep in mind what that area is, that it is larger lot, more estate-type homes, and make an important decision as to what it is people wants in that area. I don't think that the local area is what we wish to have. But that's your decision, and I assure you that with you. As you made that decision, though, I think it's important that we look seriously at the commitments that are put in place to ensure that Greenwood has quality neighborhood and has the infrastructure that's going to support that. Currently, 130 Road is a bit challenged. 130 Road is the 135 block pass. I don't see that changing. And as we add more residences to 130 Road, both on the west and the east side, it's going to continue to become a very high-traffic area. Currently, it's difficult for me to get out of my driveway. I can tell when the lights change on 135. And it's the residences are leaving there, going to work. It's an indicator for, I have horses. We show horses competitively. And I know this is not a concern that shouldn't be, but definitely a concern for council. But from a safety standpoint, I'm anxious about moving my horse around, getting out of my property. We'll find a solution, but I think it's important to keep that in mind, that traffic is going to be something that has to be addressed. We need serious consideration to that. Commitments that I think we could be looked at. One, as I suggested before, I think we need to seriously consider the ceiling of this area. It's consistent with what's there. Secondly, is to ensure that what is selected to be built there is pitfalling, meets and exceeds Greenwood's architectural standards. And I refer just to look at preserving that area and keeping the highest standards possible. So thank you for your attention this evening. And I appreciate your consideration of our requests and my requests that you give.
Thank you.
That's a very serious consideration. Thank you.
Alan Athena in Miami.
Yes, please.
6072 North 125 West. Based on the, I just have two things to add. So the Arbor Home presentation stated 2.5 houses per acre density. Looking at the map and the, the way it's kind of divided up, it looks to me like it's closer to on the west side, maybe two per acre, and maybe on the east side, like three per acre or 2.8 as far as wherever I calculated that. So it's really not 2.5 all throughout the whole entire property. The east side's quite a bit more dense than the west side is. Kind of, it's not something that I would like to see. I'd like to see the density uniform throughout. The other thing is on the tree line boundaries, if this were to go through, there was a, if the east, the west boundary on our field, I, it wasn't certainly yellow. So I'd like to see that tree line if it were to happen. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against ordinance 2501? Close the public hearing. This time, Mr. Nelson, do you have something? I understand there's a proposed motion to amend.
So yes, this did receive a favorable recommendation from the plant commission. They had a favorable vote of six to zero. We had a few people absent that day. No one would tell that it was just a lower attendance stage for the six to zero. Our staff is also favorable of the proposed zone map change and annexation. This is ordered by a few sides. It is in a logical place for the city of Greenwood to annex. They are proposing the RM zone, which would fit within our future comprehensive plan. Land use map calls for, makes sense, the residential, which would include single-family and townhomes. What I think planning would prefer to see is not having the housings so segregated in these sub-conditions, but mixed throughout and with more variety of products, such as, for example, an alley road product. But nonetheless, we were supportive as we felt that it fit within both the area that Greenwood has identified as an area that they would like to annex and it fit within a land use that was consistent with the area. Just a few things, as far as general, general suburbs are concerned, about one to four units per acre, dwellings per acre, that would be considered lower density. The density's been talked about a lot, but it's still single-family housing that is being proposed here, which is a lower density. Maybe a median density where you start getting smaller home lots and maybe more townhomes. That would be five to 12 units per acre. So just as far as densities are concerned, I know there's a lot of larger lots out there, but this would still be considered a very sizable, low-density neighborhood in the broader scheme of the state or suburb. With that, a few other things that I'd like to mention. People, there may be some concerns about people removing their animals or with the traffic with the trailers. The animals are not being annexed into Greenwood at this time. If you ever bid want to annex into Greenwood, you'd be grandfathered in and be allowed to keep and maintain the horses or other animals. Also, if you're in zone agriculture or residential, largely with a special exception, you can have a certain number of animals. Another point I would make is that you can do housing at every level, not just at the highest level or the largest lot. It is at all levels of housing that there are current shortages. In Indianapolis, Johnson County, Indiana, and really the US. With that, there was one proposed additional commitment that was not included in the PowerPoint slide. And that was to change the name from the current proposed name of Everdeen. And I believe that is related to. Any questions?
So the amendment that we need to make is to basically the red-letter portions and the second copy we got, the eight commitments.
Yes.
And then the favorable six oh recommendation from plant commission. Is that correct?
Correct. Since you received it prior to the recommendation, I think that's going to be a mechanism to include that.
All right. Do you have a motion to amend ordinance 2501 as discussed? Motion by Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Manship. Any discussion on the amendment or questions about the, what the actual amendment is? I think all of you should have received copies of the new ordinance. All right, roll call on the amendment to ordinance 2501.
Hopper. Lexi.
Hi.
Manship.
Aye.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Aye.
Gibson.
Hi.
And Hill.
Ordinance 2501 is amended on a vote of eight to zero. Any discussion on the council?
Mr. Nelson, I have a question for you. Could you refresh my memory of what the existing zoning is?
Yes, so currently, this is in Johnson County, and they have a little bit different zoning. They actually recently updated their zoning and their zoning ordinance. But this property is split. Some of it is zone for agriculture, and some of it is zone for single-family.
And is the, the density about the same that they have as what we would have on this?
And I, I do not know that answer. I'm sorry.
Any other questions or discussion on the council?
More for the petitioner, plan of using vinyl in your comments?
We are prepared to take it to a final. That's the question.
I'll make the motion as quickly as we can.
All right, we have a motion to amend ordinance 2501 to prohibit the use of vinyl on the exteriors of the homes. Have a second?
Second.
Second on Mr. Williams. Any discussion on the council on the amendment? Hearing none, then roll call on the second amendment to ordinance 2501.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
And Hopper.
Aye.
Ordinance 2501 as amended is amended again on a vote of eight to zero. Any discussion on the council or questions concerning ordinance 2501 as amended?
I mean, I still haven't gotten an answer on why it needs to be your lower-tier product as opposed to Silver Thorn. I mean, I can't. I would have, I had a good, a hard time and good conscience. I mean, Stone Ridge is right across the street. Those homes are million plus. You know, Mr. Poole's house is gorgeous. I admired it for the longest time. He's got that beautiful pond back there with the sweeping willows that, that surround it. I know how much it is because a couple of years ago, maybe four years ago or so, opened for sale. And my wife said, "How much is that house?" So I looked it up. I can't afford it, but it's gorgeous. And so I feel bad for you if this were to go through with the lower-tier housing going in higher density. So I guess my question is, why, why are you not trying to put Silver Thorn out here on larger lots and then work your way over to the, to the lower tier?
You know, I would contend that Arbor's not a lower tier. It is a larger, or a smaller lot size.
I mean, for your structure, it's the lowest tier that Arbor has, right? Though, because Silver Thorn would be the next highest tier. I don't know if it's third tier above that one or not.
Well, we do, we do have other, more dense, I guess, product that, that is different than Arbor. So, so if we're talking about average sales price, I mean, these are on smaller ones. So I think will be lower than, than, than a traditional Silver Thorn, I guess. Like down in Scottsdale Estates East, where we have, you know, we've got a runway for that type of house. So looking at the comp plan, we think, you know, an RM zone, a mix, mixed product, since it's an offering destination, as well as Arbor fits well within, within the comp plan. That this is a housing product, a price point that's needed here. We're still talking, you know, I had a discussion about, I think, the first time home buyouts has come up. And we're, this is probably ASPs are 370. You know, houses can definitely go into 400s. So it's not a, you know, for me, that's not a good figure, first time home buyout. So we can think that's also a product that's needed. But understanding, you know, this is a transitionary kind of area going from this R0 to our, to our west side slots. I think this is the next kind of step here.
I have a question. There seem to be, at least some question as to the property basically runs east-west. The single store and ranch style homes, are they going to be on the east or the west section that run?
Yeah. So those will be on the west side. I don't know if it's possible to get the map back up, but those would be the west ones. They are the larger lots, just because they are all ranches, so they, you know, have a.
So those will be along Honey Creek?
Those would be along Honey Creek, correct. Yeah, that'd be the low-maintenance portion of the community.
Okay.
To me, it seems like the further you get out from the actual part of the city, the larger lots or the, the more expensive homes would be. Maybe not just larger lots, but they would be the higher level of homes. And that's there in the Center Grove area where they do pull the, the higher dollar on houses. So I agree with Mr. Hopper. I wish that we were at a different level of housing. Okay, I take that back. It's in Center Grove. But I, I still would like to see us at a different level of housing.
Folks who go to White, it's supposed to be back sizes too.
All right, any other questions or discussion or comments on the council? All right, hearing none, then roll call ordinance 2501 as amended, first reading. All right, hearing none, then roll call ordinance 2501 as amended, first reading.
Manship. Aye.
Bo.
Aye.
Williams.
May.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Day.
Hill.
Day.
Hopper.
May.
And Lexi.
Aye.
Vote is four to four. So. What?
It fails.
It fails. It fails to pass on a vote of four to four. That's what I thought. All right. Ordinance 2503.
An ordinance amending the 2025 salary ordinance, common council ordinance number 24-27, to add part-time mobile integrated health coordinator position in the fire department, sponsored by Mann.
Do you have a motion? Some of the, motion by Mr. Hopper, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion on the council? Mr. Chief, would you like to talk to us about this?
I spoke, Jamie Washington, our chief, spoke about this last meeting, a little bit about this initiative. The funding will be used to further mobile integrated healthcare programs. Higher mobile integrated healthcare coordinator. That person, all of the patients that have been identified by our EMS calls or through other channels that need support for their challenges and coordinate care with appropriate resources that is needed to achieve that. The goal of mobile integrated health program is to help bridge the healthcare gaps, treat the root causes or challenges that you're facing, give the patient the proper resources to help those specific challenges. This program, we believe this program will be a tremendous resource for citizens who are experiencing their experiences.
All right, any questions for the chief? Any discussion on the council? Hearing none, then roll call ordinance 2503, first reading.
Bo.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
And Manship.
Aye.
Ordinance 2503 passes first reading eight to zero. Ordinance 2504.
An ordinance providing for appropriation from the Wobbeo settlement restricted fund to budget classification personal services 411 in amount of $35,000 sponsored by Mann.
Got a motion? Motion by Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hopper. Is this scheduled for a public hearing? Open it up for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against? Ordinance 2504, please step to the podium. State your name and address for the record, or if you're online, please speak up. Hearing none. Close the public hearing. Any discussion on the council? Hearing none, then roll call ordinance 2504, first reading.
Williams.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
And Bo.
Aye. Ordinance 2504 passes first reading eight to zero. Ordinance 2505.
An ordinance amending the 2025 salary ordinance, common council ordinance number 24-27, to decrease a maintenance laborer position and add a maintenance laborer non-DOT position in the stormwater department, sponsored by Campbell.
Do you have a motion?
Sure.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second by Mr. Hopper. Any discussion on the council? Hearing none, then roll call ordinance 2505, first reading.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Bo.
Aye.
And Wood.
Aye.
Ordinance 2505 passes first reading eight to zero. None under second reading. New business introduction, new ordinances and resolutions, ordinance number 2506.
An ordinance to amend Greenwood Municipal Code, Chapter 7, Article 1, Building Code, to establish a building commissioner, building code official, and inspector conflict of interest procedure and to make various changes, sponsored by Gibson.
Somebody want to talk to us about this?
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Kenneth Steele, the commissioner for the city of Greenwood. And Chapter 7 has not been updated for a long number of years. And so what I've been able to accomplish over the last couple of years while working in this position and coming upon obstacles and challenges that are just not addressed in our building code, in our Greenwood municipal code. This includes definitions, excuse me, which I'm sure some of you listeners know that definitions are extremely important when we're talking about building, when we're talking about code and these types of things, and how do we apply those. It also addresses the length of permits. Here in the city of Greenwood, we've traditionally issued building permits for three years. This was based on the I L Ps. And again, going back to establishing the building commissioner and the role that the building commissioner will play. While it's already addressed with reference in the original version that we operate off right now, it provides more control over the department and control over the permits that we're going to be issuing. Again, identifying a length of time, reducing that from three years that has previously been based off of the I L Ps and reducing it down to one year, of course, with extensions. This also addresses permit review time to actually come in line with the state at 30 days. It does address certain violations that I, again, I think that we found quite a bit of here in the city of Greenwood. We just haven't had, we lack kind of the specific language to address those violations effectively. And I think that this will help us. It adds a conflict of interest clause in line with IC 361-27-4, and that is a state requirement. And for reasons that we don't know, artists have always lacked that. And I'd be happy to answer any specific questions.
Are there any questions from the council? All right. Thank you. All right, Ms. Laney's business. This is the second opportunity for members of the public to address the council, this time concerning items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to do so, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And again, there's a five-minute time limit per person. Twenty-minute time limit per topic. Anyone? All right, Ms. Laney's business from the council. As you can see on the agenda, we have quite a few conflicts of interest. Again, we will do these the way we did last time. We will have them read into the record, and then we will take one vote on all of these to either approve or not approve. Mr. Moan has been online, but I believe he's dropped off, so we can still do a voice vote on these when we get done, so. Read into the record.
Brandon Bennett, firefighter paramedic, is owner of American Pride Innovations, which may be contracted to provide drywall paving services to the city. Isander Robinson, part-time fieldhouse associate for her spouse David Robinson for any interest she may have in his earnings as a truck diver with the city agreement. David Robinson, truck driver laborer for his spouse Cassandra Robinson for any interest he may have in her earnings as a part-time fieldhouse associate. Great, just the names. Hannah Hamilton. Jacqueline Vales. John Grine. Joseph Saylor. Kelly Stevens. Kent Stevens. Kevin Dillow. Lexi Patterson. Marine Saltsgaber. Megan Reed. Rex Saltsgaber. Rita Dillow. Robert Lane. Robert Stecker. Robert Taggart. Ron Best. And Teagan Patterson.
All right, good sense. Second, have a motion by Mr. Hopper to accept, a second by Mr. Lexi. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. They are passed unanimously. Unanimously seven to zero since Mr. You know, is that here. I have one thing. I meant to do it at our last meeting, but that's our appointment to meet and confer. I have, I believe everyone, the city ordinance on how meet and confer works. The council appoints a three-member discussion team. Our public safety personnel have already had their elections and have chosen their team. This is a formal process, and there will be meetings that you will need to attend. And while it is not required, it's hard to do this job if you don't attend those meetings. So I've asked if any of you were interested to let me know. I've had two people tell me they were interested, and that is Mr. Moan and Ms. Betron. So, and the, our appointment to this discussion team does not have to be a councilperson, but it always has been. The purpose of this is for you to meet with the public safety team and hear their concerns, and then to come up with a memorandum of understanding and present that to the council. And the purpose of this is not for you to become an advocate necessarily for either side, but that you represent their concerns to us. And it's important that this be done in a timely manner because the budget process, as we all know, begins May, June, sometime in that timeframe. So that is my admonition on this. If you have any questions, I have all that information, obviously, that I've already sent to you, but I can resend it to you if you don't have it, so. Anyway, at this time, we'll take nominations for our three appointments to the meet and confer discussion team from the council.
I nominate Mr. Moan and Miss Betron.
Right, we have a nomination for Steve Moan and Aaron Betron. Any other nominations? We need at least one more. Do you have a volunteer?
I will say it would be good to get someone passing down.
Okay.
I've done.
You've done it before. I think Mr. Hopper, and I know I've done it before, and Mr. Lexi's done.
I'm getting first chair.
Let's see that.
And Mr. Williams, have you done this before? I believe so. That only leaves one. Ms. Manship, would you be willing to serve on this discussion team? I appreciate the enthusiasm. All right, with that, we'll close nominations, all in favor of appointing Mr. Moan, Ms. Betron, and Ms. Manship to the discussion team for meet and confer. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. It passes unanimously.
You'll do great.
Thank you. And again, if you have any questions, let me know. I'll be happy to. Anything else for the council? Other Ms. Laney's business, anything for the corporation council since an hour ago?
Corporation councils had no new business the last 65 days.
Anything from the controller?
Nothing new for me.
All right, anything for the mayor? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all.